...to presentations at individual neighborhood watch groups and to our business watch groups. That's important because unfortunately burglary is one of our Part One crimes that we've been having the most difficulty with. Unfortunately, we have several burglaries. However, we're working really hard to decrease burglaries here in the city, and this is one aspect, an educational campaign.
Okay, let's start. It's called the meeting order, City Clerk.
Councilmember, Agency Directors, Mann?
Present.
Marcus? Here. Cilio?
Here.
Vice Mayor, Vice Chairman, Smith?
Here.
Mayor Chairman, Paris?
Here.
We have a quorum, and if I might, we do have a problem with our timer tonight, ladies and gentlemen, so when you do address the City Council on any items on the agenda or under non-agendized, we do have a Plan B, and we will be keeping time, and I will announce when you have 30 seconds left, and I will announce when your time is up. Thank you.
Thank you. The invocation tonight is Pastor Joe Sweet from Shakina Worship Center. You know, by the time the term's over, I'll get it.
Father in heaven, we thank you that we can gather and have this meeting, and we thank you that you have chosen Lancaster to bless this city and make it to reflect your glory. Lord, you said in your word that by wisdom a house is built, and in the same way this city will continue to be built by your wisdom, and so we ask in Jesus' name that you would pour out your grace and your favor upon this meeting. Let there be wisdom. Lord, bless our City Council and our mayor with wisdom. Let there be clear communication, let there be understanding, and God, let every decision that's made tonight be for the better good and the furtherance of your will in this city, and we ask it in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Councilman Marcus, do you want to lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Please face the flag, put your right hand over your heart, and begin.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Tonight, the student speaker is Sarah McPherson from Amargosa? I thought it was Armagosa.
Armagosa.
Yeah, I left the R on it. Armagosa Middle School. Come on up. Don't worry, he won't bite you. He looks mean, but he won't bite you.
Hi, my name is Sarah McPherson, and my subject today is President's Day. Monday, February 15, 2010, has been designated as President's Day. February is the birth month of two of America's most honored presidents, George Washington and Abraham Lincoln. Washington's birthday has been a national holiday for years, going back to 1880. No other president's birthday has been a holiday. There is some confusion about the term President's Day. The official name is Washington's Birthday and is to be observed on the third Monday in February. Several states have their own version of the holiday. Some use the day to honor particular presidents, or some presidents who are not even presidents. Certainly, both Washington and Lincoln provided remarkable leadership during perilous times for our country. Let us all recognize, let's all recognize the remark, let us all feel appreciation for the courageous leaders who have done so much to our great country. Thank you.
Okay, tonight, we have the Explorer graduation, and they're all here. You'll come help me do that, Mark? I mean, Ron? Captain, are you going to help us with this? Great. Thank you. Oh, no. Good. Do you want to do the presentation and talk to them, do the speech? And I'll hand them out. Okay. She'll turn to somebody else.
Okay, okay. Mike, come on up. Mike's been a long time, I've been involved with the Explorer program for many years, and want to have him come up and say something about it. What I'd like to say is what a terrific bunch of young ladies and gentlemen we have here. We hope that they're going to be members of our city out here, Lancaster, for many, many years to come, and my fondest hope for these young folks is that we see them in a real Deputy Sheriff uniform here a few years down the road. Thank you very much for all your effort, kids.
I was going to say, I'm Deputy Cooper. I've been Explorer advisor for, actually, this is my 20th year now, 40th class, so I've had the, you know, the privilege of seeing several of these Explorers become Deputy Sheriffs. There are so many in Lancaster and Palmdale that I've literally lost count over the years. We also have CHP officers that are former Explorers. Most of these here will go on, and in four or five years will become Deputy Sheriffs. Hopefully, they choose to remain here. They went through 18 weeks of very intense training, 18 Saturdays that is just as difficult as our Deputy Academy. Forty-four started, these 22 graduated, so a big hand for all of them, and...
So how many are going to be deputies?
All right. All right. That's wonderful.
Thank you, thank you so much for coming tonight. How do we want to do this? You want me to read them off? Okay. Jacob Belavia? Congratulations. Colin Brennan? Luis Nias? Justin Dorsey? Nico Elbridge? You don't make these guys work out, do you? Melissa Farfan? Kevin Julian? Anthony Abera? Kevin Jones? Jason Kalani? Oscar Lemos? William Mata? Jose Milan? Juan?
Kiano.
Kiano? Lizbeth Ramirez? Rudy Ramos? Eric Schumacher? I know your father. Caleb Slatter? Christian Valdez? Darren Van Arsdale? Hector Velasquez? Vincent Yavis? Yavis?
Yavis.
Yavis? I guess that's it.
That's it.
Thank you so much. Let's get a picture?
Okay.
Let me stand behind you, okay? Thank you. This is your day. You don't need me in...
Any of the parents who would like to come down to take pictures, you can afterwards...
We've got to let the captain get in front of you. Congratulations.
If any of the parents, if you guys, if any of the parents would like to come down for a minute and take pictures, you're welcome.
You can rearrange if you want, no problem. No, hold on, I think we have Assemblyman Knight in Senator Runner's office. Is that right? Senator Runner and Assemblyman Knight's office has a presentation. Come on down.
Well, on behalf of Senator Runner, it's an honor to honor these young men and women, and it's always, the best part of our job is to be here and just to recognize the awesome young men and women that we have in our community. So congratulations to all of you. Senator Runner's daughter went through the Explorer program, is now in the Coast Guard doing fabulous things, so I know you all will be doing fabulous things too, so congratulations again.
On behalf of Assemblyman Knight, I'm very pleased to be here to present these certificates, and I'll just echo what Lisa said in the interest of time, and thank you all for the great job you've done. We know it was really hard work, and there's more ahead, but this is a great event for you, and we're happy to be here. Thank you.
What happened to the charger? Okay, thank you. Thanks, guys. You know, if we could start them tomorrow.
They look like they're ready to meet.
Looks like it to me. Okay, and now we have the... Where's Kelvin? Come help me, Kelvin. This is the Joshua Neighborhood Cleanup, and it was Martin Luther King's Day of Service, and Kelvin's going to help me with this.
Correct, sir, thank you. As the mayor said, that on Martin Luther King's National Day of Service, the city's Safe and Stronger Neighborhood Committee had actually reached out to a number of our local faith-based organizations to see what we as a community can do both from the city's side and the faith-based community's side to help improve our neighborhoods, and as part of that Martin Luther King Day of Service project. And they came out in force. We were so proud to see everybody out there, and so tonight, we wanted to recognize the team leaders from these different organizations. I believe there were about seven church groups that actually responded to the call. And first I want to do is introduce Concepcion Harris, who really was the person who helped coordinate with the city and with the other organizations to come up, and maybe she can also describe for us some of the things that she encountered with that.
Well, I think what we ended up by cleaning up was about 64 tons of trash, I think that's what Richard Long said, and another five tons of scrap metal, and so it's just our pleasure to be able to help to clean up the community and all of the rest of these churches who were involved. So we're very grateful. And I also want to mention the partnership with the city. I think that was very important, because we can't do it without you either, with all of the dumpsters and, you know, that partnership, so...
And what I'm going to do right now is call up the members of the team leaders who are involved in each of the church organizations, and I'll provide the certificates to the mayor. First, we have Tom Pickens with Antelope Valley Christian Center. Michael Ridgerton with Faith Chapel North Church. David Swift, Desert Vineyard. He's here. Pat Tanner, Grace Chapel. Bishop Henry Hearns with Livingstone Cathedral Worship. And we also have a certificate for the Agapi Community Church. We have a representative from the church there.
Thank you very much. We appreciate the effort.
Thank you for letting us...
And, you know, this whole thing started with Bishop Hearns, and you have to be gratified to have seen how it has grown, and thank you so much.
I'm thankful, and thankful for the privilege of you all helping us and allowing us to do it with your support and your blessing. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, all speaker cards must be filled out and submitted prior to the agenda item being called. The same rule applies if you wish to speak on a non-agendized items at the end of the meeting. Following this process will allow us to conduct a timely and orderly meeting. Thank you. City Manager, anything to be removed from the agency?
No, sir.
Mr. Mann?
Actually, I think we...
Yeah, on the consent calendar, RCC 4 and RCC 5, I need to recuse myself. I own a property on Beach Avenue.
Okay, let's remove those. Let's move on with the RCC 1, 2, 3, and 6.
That we adopt the consent calendar as currently comprised.
I'll second that.
And it's unanimous, and that's actually working in a timely, expeditious manner. Thank you very much. Is it an apple? No, it's not even an apple.
Mr. Tynatongo had a lot to do with that.
Councilman Kinman has left the room. Let's move on to RCC 4 and RCC 5.
How do we adopt 4 and 5?
Second that.
Let's vote. It's unanimous, and Mr. Mann is being... is back in the room. Any items on the council consent calendar? City Manager?
No, sir.
Thank you.
How do we adopt the consent calendar?
Second that.
Let's vote.
It's unanimous. New business. We'll now hear the staff report from Public Works Director regarding NB1. Well, I guess we won't. We'll be hearing from the deputy city manager.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Mayor and Council, tonight, you are going to be approving another milestone in the history and development of downtown Lancaster and being one more step in the transformation of the Boulevard. Although I received the honor of presenting it to you tonight, this has been a long project that has had a lot of hands on it, community members, stakeholders, people with passion who love the downtown and want to see it revitalized. It actually started in 2004 at a planners' institute between two planning commissioners and two staff members, yours truly, Ken Mann and Ron Smith, as well as Sylvia Donovan and Brian Ludke, who came up with an idea and had a conversation about how to implement that idea. From that point, the council authorized the formation and creation of this downtown specific plan, which also went through a significant amount of public involvement, stakeholder comments, and review. The most interesting and notable part of the specific plan is that it is actually being implemented. So often, we spend the time doing reports and projects, and we don't get the opportunity to implement them. Tonight, you will be making a large step forward in implementing that specific plan. Utilizing this specific plan, we worked with the community again to begin the detailed design process of the downtown, and we've gone over that detailed design, and we actually have a model for you over there to identify what that downtown design exactly looks like, so it's a sneak peek at what it's going to look like. The most interesting part of that is identifying the magnitude of the project. You can see it's an eight, 10-block section from Sierra Highway to 10th Street West, and it's just going to be a huge, huge impact and major change. That will be showcased not only at the business conference, but in a number of different community shops and other things where people can view it and enjoy that and see what's happening. The design process also was a community process, and we've, through the Boulevard Association, the re-instituted Boulevard Association, a number of stakeholders participate in that process, and if they're here, I'd like them to be standing and recognized. It is definitely a community process, so those members of the design team, stand up. Shirley, I know you're one of them. A lot of people took part in this, and we can remember the day, sitting in Shirley's courtyard, looking at hundreds of photos, identifying what people like, what people don't like, what they want to see, and again, we as city staff had the honor of trying to interpret that and create something very special that represents the community members. A successful downtown isn't just pretty sidewalks and trees, though. The Boulevard Association has also transformed themselves in identifying four committees to become members of. The Design Committee, which you saw a little, you saw group members of today, the Organization Committee, Economic Restructuring Committee, and the Promotions Committee. Those committees will continue forth in the long-term sustainability and success of downtown as the Boulevard Association. The group of members also behind me have spent tireless hours, not only talking about design, but talking about the hopes and dreams of what downtown can be, and looking at the projects, the proposals, the events, the things that can happen downtown when we start talking about programming downtown and making it a special place. Downtown is also a partnership between private development, business owners, and property owners as well. Again, putting trees, sidewalks, things of that nature, don't accomplish downtown revitalization. It's a partnership between the private sector, building new properties, investing in the downtown, new housing projects, new restaurants. You can see a little bit of that now, and, well, you can see a lot of it now. We hope that there's going to be a lot more to come, but it's also a partnership of them, and they also are folks that should be congratulated and thanked for the process that they're doing and their continued investment in downtown. It truly will be, have an impact in the long-term quality of life for this community. Our job is not done, though. From tonight, we start a whole new process of constructing the downtown. I'm here to tell you that it's not going to be easy, it's not going to be painless, and it's not going to be simple. We again will be enlisting the support of the community to give us support, help, and most importantly, give us patience during this process. The construction will be a large number of backhoes and tractors and construction workers tearing things out, sidewalks, curbs, gutters, middles of streets, street closures. It is going to have a substantial impact in the way commerce is exchanged downtown. It's going to have a significant impact in the way traffic is going to flow downtown. We hope that we've mitigated some of that with some of the actions that I'm going to talk about now, that we minimize that, and that we, again, ask people for patience, and that we, they understand that we're trying to fix their problems and solve their problems before they happen, but when they happen, we'll be working diligently to make sure that they discontinue. We've instituted a number of programs, and will institute a number of programs, as Heather Kennedy through the Boulevard Associations have been working on a block captain program, where we've identified blocks of the downtown where members of the community and business owners will become, quote, "block captains" and be the liaison with their businesses, have regular block captain meetings so they can distribute the information, when construction's going to happen, how construction's going to happen, how it affects them, hopefully being that conduit of communication, not only from the top down, but the bottom up, so that we can identify what is going on out there and how we can serve the public. We're also allowed, and changed in the contract specs, to allow 24-hour construction to speed up the process. That is going to be upon contractors' terms, depending upon what portion they'll be working on, it may be advantageous for them to work around the clock. Obviously, working around the clock has a huge impact in time and the impact on businesses if they're able to work while business is not operating. We've identified liquidated damages for delays that are associated with closing businesses in front of their stores for a significant period of time, so that if they have closed access and have limited access to a store, that there will be penalties on the contractor as it relates to those delays. We've identified and are going to be having a construction office on the Boulevard itself, an actual storefront that will be served as a construction office, that will house our two inspectors permanently, that will have the contractor there, have the plans, specs, so that will be the hub or the coordination effort for the downtown project. So if business owners, if customers, if travelers, if public, if council has issues or concerns with the downtown, the construction office will be that site that you can go to first identify those problems, fix them, and maybe take part in the process and help solve the problem. We're also going to do something fun, I think, with some of our interns in our communications department, doing an on-the-Boulevard weekly video program, to hope not only help showcase what's happening in construction and what to avoid from a traveler's perspective, but also showcasing those businesses where they're most impacted, taking the business and saying, "What do you sell here? Let's put it on Channel 28, let's put it on our e-newsletter, let's put it on our website," showcasing that not only is the impact going to affect travelers and use the back of the businesses rather than the front, but also showcase and give the opportunity to market and express what is going on downtown, that you can get a sandwich, you can get a soup, you can do the things that are necessary downtown, and showcase those businesses to a grand level, to the 20,000 list of email folks we have, to the viewers of Channel 28, and do that on a weekly basis, so that is the source of information. We're going to have cameras, live cameras, on the Boulevard 24/7 that are accessed by the web, so if you want to see what's happening on the Boulevard, you'll be able to view that from a computer wherever you're at. You can see traffic flow, you can see what contract, what construction's happening, et cetera. We've also worked with Jim Skeen at the AV Press to do numerous articles regularly on our behalf to talk about what's happening, where the impacts are going to be happening, and what to avoid, and they've been gracious enough to assist us in that process. We also have brochures, flyers, updates, e-news, et cetera, and using all of our communications tool to make sure we get the word out. But most importantly, I think... But most importantly, I think, and the most impact that we're going to have as it relates to the interface with the public, is going to be the team we put together to work with them. Heather Kennedy, and not only is this team going to be working with this in the future, they also have been the catalyst and the drivers of what's happening right now. Heather Kennedy, if Heather can stand, where's Heather? The project manager, who will be handling a lot of the work that's happened on the Boulevard, working with the community, working with the public, coordinating the communication effort, coordinating the construction, working with all the aspects of what's going on, what's happening. We also have John Cantrell, I don't know if John's here today. John's going to be the construction manager, he will be actually in charge of all construction aspects of the project. And then Ray Hunt, who's the chief engineer, who put the, is the, I guess, architect crafter of all the bid specifications, the project itself, and will be handling all the engineering aspects of the function. We also have two inspectors that'll be on full-time, and I don't know if they're here, they're probably not here, but Sam Cervantes and Mark Alius will be two full-time, permanent inspectors on the job all the time, sitting in that office, so if there are concerns from the public, if there are concerns about how things are happening, they will be on-site 24, or not 24/7, they will be on-site in the office whenever construction is happening. I'd be remiss in acknowledging the design team as well, Liz Mullin, David Sargent from Mullin Polizotti's, who put the project together, and whose vision and, I guess, insight has touched the Boulevard in a way that I think is going to be fantastic, as well as Dave Schneider with Fong Hart Schneider, who did the plans and specifications, done a mastery of putting this project from start to finish in about eight months, and I think there is something to be told for the design team, as well as the consultants we've hired, that this process from inception to today is a major undertaking. It's huge, it's the speed at which, I think, we'd probably, it'd be hard to find somebody who's done it this quick, and I hope at the end of construction, it's going to be hard to find somebody who's done it this well. Tonight, you're approving a contract for $9.5 million and authorizing the city manager to sign the documents associated with the project. It's noteworthy also that the successful bidder is a local bidder. We are required by state law, and I know you guys have heard this a number of times, why don't we use more local people? We are restricted by state law in how we bid projects, who is awarded contracts, and tonight, you're fortunately awarding it to a local contractor, which I think is noteworthy in the sense that this typically doesn't happen in major construction projects, so it's not only good for the local economy, it's good for some local citizens who will be partaking in this construction. On the downside, the bids came in much higher than anticipated. We'd anticipated that they would be high, and we had prepared for deductive alternates so that we could cut this budget, they came in beyond that as well. As a result, you're also approving fund transfers from one fund to the construction fund of the downtown, for the items specifically are $330,000 of drainage impact fees, $150,000 of TDA Article 8 for pedestrian improvements, $185,000 of signal impact fees for the signal improvements, $2 million of TDA Article 8 funds for the streets and roads improvements that's going to be happening, and those projects are a result, or those funds are a result of savings in other projects. So other projects that were buzzed, those were savings as a result of the good bidding climate. Unfortunately, it didn't relate to our downtown project, but fortunately allowed that cushion to build the full infrastructure of what we intended to build tonight. And then additional $1.3 of economic, or $1.7, $7 million of economic development funds, which a vast majority of that was earmarked for the facade improvement program, which we've identified those funds to be used as contingency funds, so in the event that there are no contingency funds used, the, those funds will become available again for that facade improvement grant, program where we can help private businesses improve their properties. We anticipate the construction will be completed early November, we're shooting to make sure that the Grand Prix gets off without a hitch in mid-October, so we, so we'll have our kickoff event, our inaugural event being the Grand Prix, that we can share and settle and identify and enjoy the new downtown come mid-October. I caution each of us to stay vigilant, though. The construction is not the end of our obligation, not only the end of obligation for our maintenance functions, but our implementation function. It is going to be key that we continue to push developers, not push, push and incentivize developers to invest in downtown, we continue to support the local businesses to grow and expand, we continue to look new ways of making downtown a better place, and that we, for the long term, maintain it the way it should be maintained as the public asset that we know it will be. So it's not only a plea to the council, but to city staff as well as the public, that this is a long-term venture that we have invested greatly in, and we want to make sure that we maintain that to the greatest extent possible, and we will be planning to do that in this budget year. One other process, as we look to change the downtown's look, we also need to change the downtown's image. Your council authorized Ron Smith to work with students at AV College to look at the brand of downtown and what it means as we, as the feel of downtown and what it will be. It's an equally important aspect of the construction, and with that, I'll turn it over to Ron to talk about the branding program. From what I can tell, it's as fantastic as the construction itself.
Well, you know, from the inception, we've really wanted to include the public and the stakeholders downtown, so we wanted to do that in the branding also. We wanted to create a brand that was not only viable for local residents, but also on a regional basis, and a brand is not just the mark and the logo that you see, and that's what we worked on, but it's the feel, it's the atmosphere, it's the destination, it's what it is, what downtown is. And so we first did a bunch of surveys, and we got information, and staff put it together, and we identified a target audience that we wanted to go after, which was about a 26 to 44-year-old range that liked the arts, as the mayor says, we're not going to be here in another five or 10 years, it's going to be the new leaders and the new community that's taking over.
We mean sitting here, not here.
Sitting here. That's right. So we wanted to create this atmosphere that is viable, because in order to be economically viable downtown, you need a nightlife, you need a reason to come also from below. So that was the brand, we had identified, we identified the target audience, and so then what we wanted to do was to get the youth involved, the younger college students, in actually creating the end part of the brand, which is the identity, the logo, the tagline, the color palette, the typography, that puts everything together, that is the message out there. So what we did, we, the process was, is we actually had some design students, I was lucky enough to be able to participate because of the three hats that I wear, not only with the city, but I'm an assistant adjunct professor at the college for graphic design, and I have my own graphic design firm, and since the beginning of Ken and I getting this started, you know, I've been intimately involved in the aspects of moving this forward. So let me mention the people that we had involved. What we did was we formed an advisory committee of the stakeholders and some of the local business people, and if they're here when I call their names, please stand up, they were, they were to make sure that the students, as they went through, and myself working as the art director, we stayed on point and on brand of the direction that the citizens had said that they wanted to go. And that would be Heather Kennedy from the city of Lancaster, Jason Cottle, of course, Jay, you have to stand up too. Vern Lawson, we had Maria Elena Greto from the Lemon Leaf, Josh Mann from the Boulevard Association, Kelly Grady from Davis Communications, Shannon Dow, who's within our demographic and also works in our communications, Shirley Griffith from Panache.
That means you're young.
That's right. Chris Greto, who owns George's Cleaners and also newly elected on the school board, Amanda Johnson from Insight Development, she was the project manager for the Artist Lofts for Scott Erlick's Corporation, Larissa Nickel, who's here from our museum, Rick Utiras for Multi-Vision Designs, he works with Insight and is the one that's doing the branding for Bex and for the Brooklyn Deli and for the Artist Lofts, also Elise Marie Vath, which is also a professor at AVC, and Cody Urban from Time Warner. We put together a group of students that were going to work on this, and they went through, and we met with the advisory committee of, you know, seeing for this particular target audience and this brand, what colors, what typography, what's the symbol is going to be, and I just want to name the students that were involved. Tonight, we actually have some awards, the committee voted on some of those that contributed the most and to the final brand, and they're going to get some awards from not only the Boulevard Association, but from the city of Lancaster, some cash awards that they can use for their further education. We had Susan Sikowski, Kiyoshi Becker, Aaron Henninger, Chris Mellinger, Brian Raxton, Dorothy Soto, Casey St. John, Natalie Velos, Ashley Griffith, and Israel Barrero. So at this time, I'd like to say this really was such a great collaboration, it takes more than one person to be able to come up with something that's going to be dynamic, that's going to really sell this to not only our community, but to the rest of Los Angeles County. And some of the people that I personally like to thank that even helped me out even more on getting this done is Heather Kennedy from our staff, just did a fantastic job, Josh Mann, we were on the phone a lot, Maria Elena, Kelly Grady from Communications, just did a great job, and the students did too, so this is truly just a collaboration. What we have up here is my first PowerPoint slide. It's a blank canvas, and that's really what we started with. A lot of downtowns, they tell you, as Heather and I went to the downtown associations, they said, "Your downtown is what it is, people already have it branded, they already know what it is, you can't rebrand it." But we're really creating something new with this construction that we're doing, and it really is going to be something different, something that people haven't seen before here in the valley. So if you just take a moment, I just want to go through a few slides, and then we'll talk more about the brand. Dave, I think your head's in the way. And that's the Boulevard, a destination for your senses, because that's what the Boulevard's going to be, it's going to be a place to come, to hear music, to see the sights, to see alpac, to look at the art galleries, to taste the foods, to spend time with the ones that you love and your friends. And you can see that the demographic there, they live on their iPhones, they talk back and forth, they take pictures, and hopefully they're sending those pictures of the Boulevard all over the place. So what we had, the color palette is a European traditional color palette, this is the color palette for everything that's going to be branded on the Boulevard, that includes the banners, the signs, the collateral material, including the wayfinding signs that are being created right now. The typography, we picked Futura, which comes out of about 1925, it's from the Bauhaus, it's more of an industrial geometric, you know, modern. What we had here is we were trying to design something, we have Art Deco buildings on the Boulevard, and we also have some contemporary industrial buildings like the Artist Loft, so we wanted to get that range, something new, but still keep a little bit of that Art Deco old. So we have the ITC Corianna also. The display headline, Boulevard Gothic Deco. This font is actually created specifically for the city of Lancaster. It's based on a font back from a 1925 font face called Publicity Gothic from the Bernhard Brothers and Spindler. Each of these characters were hand-drawn and done into a fontography program, so this is an actual font face registered just for the city of Lancaster's Boulevard, and it's named Boulevard Gothic Deco. This is the logo with the tagline. We've also decided that if we want to use something a little bit shorter and iconic... And the last page shows you the color palette, the typography, and sort of a layout of how it can be used in example. Down the line, what's going to be next as we go with the branding is we'll actually be creating a branding guide to make sure that everything stays on brand, and that's it, but I have some awards that we want to give some of the students.
Ron, that was wonderful.
Some of them aren't here tonight, but I see some of you, so there's two students, there's two students that actually, that we decided contributed the most, and so they're going to get $700 as a, to use any way they want for their education to move forward. And we had three other students that we decided as a group that they contributed, you know, significantly, and they're going to be getting $200 each. So the first one who contributed quite a bit was Dorothy Soto, I know she's here. So they can see your name. Kiyoshi here? They have to go to their classes tonight, because if they don't, they get dropped on the first week, so it's very, very stringent. Casey St. John, I didn't see Casey here. Oh, there he is, oh. No more facial hair, you didn't? Casey, Casey's actually one of the other ones that gets $700 that actually contributed a lot to the brand, so.
More importantly, why isn't he in class?
I don't know, is he having class tonight, or?
6:15.
6:15? Oh, right, you made it just in time. Susan? I see Susan Sikowski. And I saw Ashley, Ashley Griffith. Who is also one of our Jet Hawk cheerleaders. Oh, yeah, Mom, where's Mom?
Right there.
Oh, there you go, okay, Mom. Thank you.
You've noticed that I've learned, Ron was going to do a PowerPoint, so I made sure I didn't do a PowerPoint this time, so with that...
We were wondering what was going on there.
With that, I'll happy to answer any questions you may have.
Well, I think it's magnificent that we were able to get, you know, $25,000 worth of graphics for $1,400, that was great.
I still hire than that, actually.
That's been my favorite part so far, too.
That's the one part I didn't mention, because just before, you know, there were some naysayers that'd say, "Hey, how did Ron get this business in?" No, it's, I think if you went out and bid on this, it would be quite a higher bid than that, and yeah, Mark loves it because it was free, except for the, you, but the students, yeah, Mark loves anything to say free, so.
That's quality work, thank you very much.
I've got, any questions?
I've got three questions or three points I'd like to go over. One is, it's an ambitious project, and it will physically impact the downtown in a negative way while the construction's going on. What sort of plan do we have in place for the existing businesses? We don't want to build this beautiful Boulevard, but drive some of our smaller businesses out in the process. What's the longest amount of time you think a business would be negatively affected in their little corner of the Boulevard?
We have the restriction of 14 days at any time that they can be closed to the front of their business. They will continue and be able to continually operate as they have in the past, just access from the rear. When I talked about the liquidated damages, those liquidated damages, when at that time of closure and pedestrian access to the front of their businesses are gone for more than 14 days, so we hope that that will limit some of that exposure. We have talked about, and either during the construction or after the construction, and this is still, it's a budget issue and a debate amongst how we implement this, but we're doing some type of local program where we can incentivize or hand out gift cards to a certain extent for downtown businesses to help offset some of those losses, either during construction or maybe even after construction, to help lessen the blow.
Second item, there are seven bids, I noticed that...
I noticed that five of them, according to the staff report, were corrected for mathematical errors. Is that typical to have such a high percentage that...
I can defer to Ray Hunt.
Jason, I think I can answer that. On something this complex, I don't know if five out of nine is that, but we definitely get where we have to correct for mathematical errors. It's a very complex project.
That kind of tells into the third item, the complexity of the specifications and bid schedule. I don't, in eight years, I don't recall a project that had this many alternatives. In this case, they're deductive alternates. The staff report says there's an attached list of deductive alternates, if you could define what those are, but they're listed in order of preference. None of the bids met our expectations, so we went with the base bid minus all the deductive alternates. It gets pretty confusing. If you could touch on those and explain how we got to this bidder and what the process was that was followed out?
I'd like to address that. We got to this bidder because this low bidder is the low bid with or without the alternate deductives. We made a staff and ultimately my decision, but with the help of staff, that we're going to only do the Boulevard once probably in our tenure here. We're going to inconvenience the community and the downtown for a year. We were not willing to settle to take things out. They were going to diminish the project. Again, it's the low bid, whether or not it has the alternate deductives, and the ones we decided were by staff, we think are the ones that need to be in there, so they do not diminish the project.
Mr. Mayor, let me just tag on to that, that when you award the bid, we have to take the base bid and award it based on an even playing field. You can't mix and match the, you know, take, figure out who has the lowest bid by taking different deductive alternatives out of it. You've got to take the same thing out of all the bids so that you get to a base bid and then compare that and pick the low bidder, which is what we did. And they would have been the low bidder whether you used the total base amount or deducting all of the nine deductive alternatives. You pick the low bidder on that basis. And then if you decide that you can still afford some of the deductive alternatives, then you can add those back in and you can mix and match at that point, but only after you have determined who the low bidder is.
I guess that's the part that I don't have straight, is the attached report also lists alternates in order of preference. So I would think when you start adding them back in, you would add in 1, 2, 3, 4, but we wound up adding back in 1, 2, 6, and 7. Did you, did we lay out a matrix with various combinations? Or how did we, how do we select those particular deductive alternates?
As Dave said, notwithstanding how we have to do it to choose the bidder, we believe those were the ones that are most important to do and most impactful on the project. So that is the staff recommendation, those. The ones we did not choose, we believe, are not impactful on the project, but we can still deal with it like compaction soil. There are other ways to make sure that the roots don't pull up the infrastructure. But not doing something like Elm Avenue, for example, didn't make sense, or reducing the size of the trees didn't make sense, given all the trouble and everything we're doing on the project.
Thank you.
Mark, just clarification, and I was listening closely, so don't want you to think I wasn't paying attention to your answer. So then we, out of those nine alternatives, we felt that those four items that were selected were the most key elements in relationship to the improvement downtown then, when there was a... Because I understood the fact that we really only have one time to do this, and we don't want to make it disruptive in the future and come back and say, "Oh, we should have done this," or "We should have not." So how was those four in a hierarchy structure determined?
Again, staff's determination, working with the community, that these are the most important to do. There's other things, as I explained, that we could do in different ways, like the soil compaction. One of the things that I give Jason and staff a lot of credit for is they looked at ways to keep the look of the paver, but were able to find an alternative paver scheme that's significantly less expensive yet still gives the look. So we went through each of those, decided based on budget what we could afford and where we could deal with the other ones. We think we have a project that is virtually indistinguishable from the full project we bid and will meet all the public benefits, but at a reduced cost.
Okay. One last comment, I guess, or maybe a question. When I, not being familiar with all the companies that bid on it, obviously there's a little bit of familiarity with Granite Construction and C.A. Rasmusen. And I'm elated that we got to award a project that benefits the city as a whole, but it also benefits a local contractor. I'm not aware of historically Haynes and Associates doing something on this magnitude. Was there a discussion or am I missing something? Or did we, did we, I want to make sure that the public is aware that we cross all of our Ts and dotted all of our Is.
That's correct. We do an evaluation of the contractor's capabilities. There are two things in the Contractor's Code as relates to nonresponsiveness and nonresponsibility. Nonresponsive is if they comply with the requirements of the bid. Nonresponsible is the assumption or the lack thereof, their ability to implement the project. The latter is a much greater process to eliminate somebody for. Understanding that some of the projects they've done in the past, we didn't feel that there was any reason to cause this contractor to be nonresponsible. They've done some projects locally, some large projects locally, I believe in Palmdale, and worked closely with the schools on a number of projects. Specifically, have they done a downtown improvement? You know, I don't know that they have that on their resume. Have they built some significant projects locally? Yes, they have.
Specifically, who actually picks the contractor?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Oh, I'm sorry. Specifically, who picks the contractor?
Well, it's the bid process. I'll ask Dave to explain, but it's the staff based on state law. Go ahead, Dave.
What are the job titles of the staff that picks the contractor?
We have our purchasing person that will be involved. We have our construction staff, Ray Hunt's crew, that are involved. Any questions, go over it with the city attorney. In this case, we also had our deputy city manager involved as well, too. But again, we follow the same process that we would for any bid. But those are the people involved.
Who makes the final determination that this is the lowest bid and that they're qualified contractor?
You do, you are tonight.
Well, that's what we're going to do tonight, but up until now.
The recommendation would be by that group of people. It's no single person, but it would be that group of people.
So is it a vote? I mean, I want to know the process.
No, the vote, it's not a vote. It's a determinative process based on the numbers.
Okay.
Strictly based on the low bid.
Okay, up until this moment, has the council been involved in this election in any way?
Absolutely not.
Okay. Thank you. That's what I wanted to know. Anything else?
You have other comments?
No, I know that. Thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
Oh, and thank you for picking a local contractor.
Mayor Perez, council members. I'm excited as anybody else here about seeing the project that has been in the works for quite a period of time come to be. I have some questions and concerns regarding the cost of the project and how it's being funded. When you look at this and you say, "The engineer has come up with a cost." All the bids that have come in have been significantly higher. One thing that hasn't been asked or addressed is why? Why is there a 15% difference between what the engineer has? And this is a person, they don't just pull numbers out of the air that says, "This is what the project should roughly cost."
Are you sure about that?
Well, it's like our economists. So why would we have a 15% difference? And then when you add to that another 10% for contingency, you're looking at a 25% difference in the cost of this project. And that is after shaving out significant aspects of the project, including Elm Street altogether. So I would maybe go back and say, "Why don't we put the brakes on this? I know we want to move forward, but this isn't an open checkbook. Let's ask the questions. Why do we have a 25, a potential 25% difference in what the engineers has and what these bids could, and what you ultimately would be approving for this?" I'd be asking that question, find out what aspects, who's right, who's wrong in this. The second concern I have in this is regarding the transfer of funds. As I understand it, it's been identified, is about a little over $2 million from the bikeway funds. That's 20% of the project.
I don't think that's accurate. I think it was actually from the street funds.
It was erroneously reported in the paper as bikeway funds.
Okay, then I guess my question there is kind of mute, so. But I appreciate you guys to take it, step back, and, I mean, cost of construction nowadays is at its lowest point that it's been in many decades. And so I would maybe say, do we need to go back to the drawing board, especially since we're eliminating a number of aspects and look at this again? Thank you.
I think that's a valid question.
Yeah, absolutely. And we ask ourselves the same thing. As part of the process, we will look at engineer's estimate prior to, obviously, budgeting the project as well as bidding the project. In this case, we even went one step further and hired an outside consultant to come and give us a bid even further and beyond that. So we've not only did it ourselves, we also had an outside firm come and do that. And sometimes you have to say, "We miss. We can't predict how somebody's going to be affected by the market, how labor costs are going to impact them, what other work they're doing." There's a lot of factors. I mean, it really is an art, not a science. And we try to, in the front end, do as much as we can as relates to predicting what the bid's going to be. In some cases, before your council, a couple months ago, we estimated way high. And we, that's where the savings come from in a lot of the projects, the funds we're transferring. So it really is an art. And, you know, we miss some and we make some. And it, we have to be prepared to make those adjustments when necessary.
Mr. Mayor, I got a question. I mean, I know that the statement made was that we possibly could be 25% higher, but wouldn't a project of this scope and size normally carry a 10%? I mean, to me, you know, I noticed right off that we were 15% off, but I don't know if we're going to get rid of the engineer because he missed shot it, but...
The short answer to your question is yes. We do have a temper...
Yeah, so it's really not, so we're really not off 25% because most projects that's come before us anyway, we've always had a 10%.
And in fact, it's typically not 10%. It's lower than that, understanding the complexity of the project.
Right.
The history of the downtown. When we start digging things up, we're going to hit something. So we've even added to that, that is typical in a contingency for those occurrences that we know are going to happen.
Yeah, and I also would like to remind everybody, too, I know Mark and I talked about this when he called me and said that we had a pipe break over on Beach. And I just laughed at him because he thought it was, at first he thought it was kind of a big deal. And I said, "Well, give me a break. When was Lancaster Boulevard developed and where is the bulk of our old utilities at in the city of Lancaster? Were they going to be in downtown?" So I have a sneaky suspicion we're probably going to, might run into some problems. I mean, to me, it's like not rocket science.
Just one note, and from a proactive standpoint, we've already met with the utilities, kind of expressed the importance that the council holds on this project as well as Mark, and identified ahead of time emergency numbers, contact information, so that we make sure that we keep a strong line of communication with those utilities. In some cases, they can delay the project because we're waiting on them to fix something that was broke or something we found once we dug something up. So we're very cognizant of that and way ahead of the game in trying to predict and trying to work with those utilities to come and fix what ends up being a problem.
Well, my concern is, everybody understands that we might actually become a benefactor of this because if we're doing work downtown, there's going to be some utilities that are going to get replaced, just simply because of the work. And I'd much rather do it now than like what we encountered here a while back with one of the old water lines. So I think actually there's going to be some benefits that we really can't put our finger on.
Thank you. Anything else?
I have a couple of issues. One is the rambles parking that you have in the street. It's the diagonal parking stalls in the middle of the street. They have a problem of people, when they park, a senior citizen or a mother with some kids, when they get out of the car, they can't see, you know, a traffic coming or kids getting out of the passengers out of the car, running out from behind the car into the oncoming traffic trying to get to the storefront across Lancaster Boulevard. Now, so many parks in the middle of the street like that, there is going to be that kind of a liability issue. Also, senior citizens or anybody who tries to back out of a diagonal parking spot like that, having their vision blocked by the vehicle next to them, trying to back out of the parking position is going to have an issue trying to pull into traffic that's going to be moving down Lancaster Boulevard. That is a tremendous liability to the city as far as that goes. Maybe as an attorney, you might like that, you know, for possible clients.
Just when you had me interested, that you were actually here for a legitimate purpose.
I'm just pointing out what happens in other cities. In Alhambra, when they redeveloped this downtown Main Street, the amount of businesses that actually remained open after they redeveloped it was 10%. The rest of them could not survive because of their loss of business in that area. Now, also looking at the developers here, I looked into Haynes and Associates, your top bidder, and he hasn't had one major construction project as far as municipal development whatsoever. Most of his projects that I could tell were from co-products with Frank Visco in the Lancaster area. Now, to me, that would be, seemed like a liability because how is this guy going to actually ever guarantee the project's going to be done in any timely manner as far as that goes or being able to actually complete it with his amount of expertise? Looking at all the mathematical corrections, the lowest bidder, who did not have any mathematical problems, was Granite Construction. And it would seem to me that since that was the one that did not have any mathematical errors or...
30 seconds?
Could do calculations properly, should be the one who should be, you know, given the award for the contract. That's just the way I see it.
Thank you, Mr. Palka.
Just a word of caution when you're working with these young people on this project, just be careful they don't bring back Cruz Knight. That was quite a problem for the Sheriff's Department and city fathers a few decades back.
Lyle, I want you to know the city manager has been trying to get us to bring it back. It's true.
Well, about this money that's been spent on the Boulevard in one square mile, or less than a mile, actually, there's one mile on 10th Street West, south of City Hall, between L and M. It's broken down into several double lanes and then single lanes. It's a choke point. Been that way for quite some time. I wrote a letter in March, and I like to read it now, I have time. A recent letter from a Lancaster resident complained about traffic gridlock at Sierra Highway and Rancho Vista Boulevard in Palmdale, making it difficult for him to reach Trader Joe's in the new Armigosa Commons. There is also gridlock in the city of Lancaster on 10th Street in the southbound lanes between L and M. From two lanes, traffic narrows down to just one lane except for some piecemeal widening as new businesses open in intermittent locations on the west side of the street. Call it a choke point or a bottleneck. It makes a dangerous emergency situation for emergency vehicles. It also makes it difficult for Lancaster residents who prefer to shop at Palmdale Mall instead of the barren retail scene in our city. It's been a clogged artery for years. Perhaps our city fathers can see the situation as placing a tunicat to stop the sales tax hemorrhage. hemorrhage in the Lancaster to Palmdale. And that was in March of 2004. And I'd like to direct this to our public works director and see if he could not squeeze some money out of this budget and the money that's being spent on this project to perhaps ease that situation down there. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Taupin.
All right. Can I present that to the...
I, I love your bumper sticker, Lyle.
Oh, you want one?
I just absolutely love it. What, what does it say?
It's my fundraiser for my campaign.
Can we give him a shameless plug? What does it say? No, we, we, we won't, we won't mention what it says. But it is incredibly clever. You know, I don't, I don't want to get distracted by the, the personal shock, I, but I think Mr. Pelka actually had a point. Have we done any, have we looked at the, the, there's an increased danger? I guess it helps if I turn it on, huh? Sorry about that. Have, have we done any, any studies to look or looked at any studies as to whether or not that type of diagonal parking increases any risk, raise the risk load or...
Let me clarify what the process is, is, as it relates to backing out of there, the ramblous area. We've had traffic engineers, not only our traffic engineers, but also contract engineers with the consultant who designed the project. The intent is that it, the narrowing of that street will lower the field of vision of the driver and then slow the traffic to about 15 to 20 miles per hour, making it a very pedestrian friendly area. And that's the intent, and I think that's the intent of the specific plan originally was to slow down traffic, make it pedestrian friendly. Will the backing cause and increase it to be even slower? Yes. Will the driver need to be more cautious when they drive? Yes. Will the parents need to be cautious when their children are crossing the street? Always. But the lessening and the slowing of that traffic will have a huge impact on the safety. The, the, the driver will just feel enclosed into a space by which they will not want to drive fast and be more attentive to their awares. And then if they're, we will be watching it keenly. It's, it's not the first time this has ever been done, but it should serve, very similar to the way the parking lot serves, is that the speed should, speed should be such that it should not cause that kind of interface or that kind of problem.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, you know, I can recall Ron and I attending a workshop on traffic calming, and they actually had several downtown examples of different alter, you know, where they went back into downtowns and made changes. And I know initially I was kind of a naysayer when I went into that because I couldn't, like, you know, you, you can't conceive that because right now our, the way we think is the way traffic moves down Lancaster Boulevard right now, which is pretty quick. But they actually had studies done afterwards with making changes such as we're recommending. And they actually had a significant reduction, less accidents. I know it's hard to comprehend, but they actually had the data and the, and the resources to support that. So I know it's, it's tough to, tough to, to accept that, but if, I think, Ron, you recall that?
Yeah, and I don't know if you went to that particular day. I don't know, I think Brian and I went to it. There was this street up in Monterey that was going in the Presidio. And so you had all these Army officers and Navy officers going to their language courses, late of course, going down a residential zone, and they're doing like 50, 60 miles an hour to try to get into the Presidio. What the city of Monterey did was they did a little tiny center divider with some flowers, just a small eight-foot strip, you know, long. And then the lane next to it was the width of a freeway lane. And we stood there with a radar gun and watched everybody go down to about 20 miles an hour because mentally they figure, I can't go that fast, just from that small little visual. As the traffic engineers will tell you, that speed limits don't stop people. It's the visual feeling that people get. So if it looks like a raceway like Lancaster Boulevard does now, and it was a raceway too, but, you know, you, you end up going faster. So, you know, with all those trees and everything that Molin Polizzi's put in there, it's going to slow people down. And that's the, that was the whole idea, is to get people to slow down, see the businesses there, want to get a... Right now, when you go to El Pac at night for dinner, you want to walk across the street? Gets a little, gets a little scary. And so it's, uh, it's, it's true what they said.
Perhaps you should start using the crosswalk. I couldn't resist. Okay, let's close the public hearing of...
I had a question for either, I had a question for either Jason or the, do we have the engineer here that worked on the, worked on the project and... Yes. I, I have a question about the, the, the type of work that needs to be done. Is, would it be better for you or the engineer? What would you like?
Probably, probably better for Ray to answer that question.
Okay. Thanks, Ray. Because we're, we're talking about this immense project, right? And that was one of the questions that was brought up by the public. I just want to see if my thinking is straight on here. If you took like a half a block of this plan and did it, it would be a small project, right? I mean, half a block. Aren't we just taking that half a block and the reason why it's a huge project is we're just sort of replicating it for one mile? I mean, for the most part? I mean, I know there's other utilities and stuff going on, but it's, I mean, the immensity of this project is because it is landscaping and re-tiling one mile or off on that.
No, I, I'd say you're right. I mean, the magnitude of the scope definitely adds to the complexity of the project. But there's a lot going on as far as the removals and coordination with the new stuff that has to go in. And, you know, the price is indicative of that coordination and the liability that the contract stretch have to accept with the restrictions that we've put on them to complete the job in a fast-paced environment, offering a 24/7 work time. So there's a lot of that that goes into it and the coordination with the businesses and the impact to this traveling public that it really makes us a complex project.
All right, so we're doing it in phases?
Yeah, the, the idea is that we'll, we plan to start on the east end of the Boulevard. From Sierra Highway to Beach will be the first portion, but we'll, we'll close the Boulevard to through traffic at three-block intervals, no greater than that at any time. The cross-traffic north-south being on Beach, Cedar and Date will remain open for traffic.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So when can we have our first farmer's market on Lancaster Boulevard?
Well, what we've committed to in the plan, there in the specifications, is that the Boulevard will be ready to enter, to host the Streets of Lancaster, the Second Annual Streets of Lancaster event, with minor work to be completed possibly afterwards, which may entail some of the plantings that will be done last. So I would say the beginning of November.
Terrific, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mark, you remember Streets of Lancaster? That's that race you lost?
That wasn't quite my recollection, but I do remember the day. I think you bumped me if I recall.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, if I could make just a quick observation. First of all, I wanted to thank Jason and the young lady that's here. I am your representative to the Senior Center. And on this past Monday, they were there and gave a little illustration of all that's going to happen. They gave dates and everything else so that the people could know what is going to happen in the street. And the seniors are excited as all get out about what's going to happen in the middle of the street in Lancaster. And I wanted you all to know, I really appreciate that. Also, I'm very thankful for both Ron and Ed, who were with us when we took the tours over in Rancho Cucamonga and other places, and we saw these things happening and then brought it here. I'm excited as all get out that that is happening. So I want to thank you again for coming to the Senior Center and letting them know what our mayor and city council is doing. So, thank you for the...
Thank you, Bishop. Okay, is there a motion?
I'll move that we, that we award the Public Works Construction Project Number 09030.
Is there a second?
I second that.
Let's vote. Okay, let's take 15. Okay, let's get back to work. New business item number two.
We have no speaker's cards, Mr. Mayor.
Do you want to wave the... No, I think you should hear it. You want to give the report?
I think it's a good project. I really think Robert can give a quick report, but it's important.
Yep.
Robert, give a real report.
Well, I thought Jason did an incredible job. I'm excited about the downtown project. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of City Council. Tonight, staff is asking you to consider approval of a building incentive stimulus program. We believe this program is important to our local economy and to the city. What we want to do is motivate builders to invest in our city. And we believe that providing a building stimulus, a reduction in fees, our city imposed impact fees can help do that. What we're proposing is a 20 percent reduction in development impact fees and, and actually a 30 percent reduction in the downtown areas to help incentivize the development in the downtown. As we're all aware, the recession is impacting our community. There are a lot of folks out of work. Personally, I, I know of so many people who've worked in the construction industry for lots of years that are out of work. We, Lancaster's unemployment rate is 17 percent. Unemployment rate in the construction sector, I would estimate to be more than double that. To give you a perspective on this, at our, just a few years ago at our peak, we were building roughly 2,900 houses. This year, we will probably build less than 200 houses. And there's, the analogy is comparable in the commercial and retail areas as well. When families aren't working, it hurts not only them, but it hurts local businesses, it hurts their families. We, we believe that if we can stir up construction, it'll be good for our community. This program is focused and targeted on the building industry. We believe that they're in desperate need of it, that we're in desperate need of it, that when our neighbors go back to work, they help support our economy in so many ways. So what, what we're looking at is for, for single-family house construction, our impact fees are a little over $11,000. A 20 percent reduction would mean there's roughly $2,000 incentive that would be given to a builder. Larger projects, if a development were to come in that required $200,000 of impact fees, we would see a $40,000 reduction in that overall fee. If it was in the downtown area, it would be a $60,000 reduction. We've been approached by builders. We think that if we offered this kind of program, that we would see people investing in our community. So, and we, we believe this is necessary. It's a, it's a program that would last through the end of this year. It's, it's just a, a temporary thing. So we're asking you to consider what we think would be a viable building incentive program. And I'm going to stop there and, and answer any questions you may have.
Any questions?
That applies equally to both residential and commercial development.
It does. It does.
Any expectation of the impact it's going to have?
I, I believe if we move forward with this program, that we will meet our, at least meet our revenue projections for next year, that we will see more houses constructed this coming year than we have this, this past year.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all.
There's no speaker cards? Any discussion?
We all move that we adopt Resolution Number 10-08.
I'll second that. Let's vote. It's unanimous.
Could actually like, couldn't we get like a, you build a house, you get a $30 gift card from redevelopment? Just a thought. Could be good.
Artists.
Church box speaking.
There's no council agenda, city manager?
Two announcements. First, due to predicted storms and some of the issues that are happening in Supervisor Antonovich District, he regrettably has to cancel tomorrow and, because of his duties down in LA, the breakfast meeting with the council. We apologize for the late notice. It was unavoidable. It will be posted tomorrow on the Lemon Leaf where the meeting was going to be. The supervisor's office did notify the media to get the information out. It will be rescheduled at a future date. We were fortunately able to talk to Lemon Leaf, and they did not expend any funds or staffing to prepare for it. So we were able to do that, and the, the notice was unavoidable. The other, only other announcement I would make is that I think tonight is a historic night. I think that what we're doing with the downtown and the project that Roger, that Robert just reported on are truly going to change this community. The mayor and I were having a good discussion this morning at a breakfast meeting, and one thing he said, and I've learned, is that as you give up control, a little bit magnificent things happen. And this is truly the staff members who put this together with the direction of council, so I'm very proud of the staff.
They have been batting a thousand. I'm just astonished what you guys are accomplishing. Thank you. Okay, city clerk?
Ladies and gentlemen, this is the time for you to address the city council on any items that are not on the agenda. You may find speaker cards at the back of the council chambers on the table. We respectfully request that you fill the cards out completely and print as clearly as possible so that if necessary, the city council, the city manager, or city staff will be able to contact you. As much as we appreciate your request to make comments before your three minutes begin, please understand your time begins when you're, when you start to speak. Since our timer is not working tonight, we do have a Plan B, and we will be timing you. And I will announce when you have 30 seconds left, and I will announce when your three minutes are up. We do appreciate you sticking to the allotted time to allow other speakers to have their three minutes as well. Our microphones are very sensitive and able to pick up your voices, so there's no need to really adjust the microphones. State law prohibits the city council and the agency from taking action on items that are not on the agenda, and your matter will be referred to the city manager. Thank you.
Thank you. Jason Sink?
Today I dropped off some packets I wanted you to look at, just some ideas I've had in my head probably for 15 years and stuff like that. So I hope you look that over and hopefully it makes things happen. The other thing I come down today is the, you know, I always come, and it's been nine months, I brought up the, I'd like to see a temporary asphalt sidewalk to Endeavor School along Avenue K from 40th to 45th Street. I see you guys did put a street light in sidewalks to the school, but I'd like to see that temporary school. Also, Miller School, where I drop off one of my nephews, as you're coming off Avenue K under 22nd Street, it's, there needs to be a, a lane going into 22nd so people doesn't jam their, the car right in the back of you when you're making that turn. If you drive over there, Mayor, you drive right by it, you'll see it's pretty dangerous. There's a pothole right there or a ditch right there, water ditch. And I'd like to see some sidewalks going to that too, some improvements through the American Reinvestment Act that you guys are receiving from the federal government. Also, I wanted to bring up Lancaster Boulevard. I think it is a historical moment tonight, and I really would like to see the magic return to when I was cruising Lancaster Boulevard, cruising for girls, checking out the new cars everyone had. It seemed like all the hot girls are from Corseale. I don't know why, I'm from Little Rock. But, but I'd like to see, really Lancaster Boulevard, even though it's Lancaster's, I really look at it as Lancaster Boulevard is the Antelope Valley's Boulevard. And I would like to see maybe the council invite town councils, chambers, commerce, high schools from all over Antelope Valley to come in and join in and let them know about it and tell them that Lancaster Boulevard is still going to be open, but invite them to plant one of those trees that you guys are planting on, having a tree community, Antelope Valley-wide thing.
That's a great idea.
Also, I'd like to see, I was on Pondo Council, and I got on, on them, and Lancaster... Also, I'd like to see... I was on Pondville Council, and I got on them, and Lancaster Council. I'd like to see you guys spend more money getting out there and getting jobs and stuff, and going to these conventions and stuff like that. There is that Energy Convention in Washington, DC, I think a representative, council member, or somebody from the staff should have attended. So spend that money. They were worried...
30 seconds?
For going for the council? You guys need to be spending $200,000 going out there and making things happen. Also, I want to talk about cops in the community. I... it seems like we're almost occupied. I feel like we're occupied like in Iraq right now. A helicopter flies over my house. Low, I think that's illegal. I think they should be flying up a lot higher. And if you can just give me a little bit of time on this. But also, they're giving out tickets to people at Miller Elementary.
Your time is up.
Briefly.
Okay. And I think it'd be... it's just this intimidation factor. And in Pondville, at City... I mean, the cops are waiting outside of our local restaurants, waiting to give people DUIs. I don't want to live in a community like that. I want... I respect cops. I want them to be, you know, our friends and stuff like that, and look out for us, go after gangs and drug dealers and stuff. But I don't want to be intimidated. And it's really happened a lot. I mean, you see 10 cop cars a day, and it feels like we're in Iraq.
Jason, let's set the point.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
David Paul?
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor.
Been seeing your picture everywhere, David.
Good evening. Thank you, sir.
You were much more handsome with the beard, though.
Some say, and I might agree. Tonight, I came and I enjoyed what we're doing with the downtown. Economic issues aside, if the economy holds, we'll have a beautiful place. But more importantly tonight, I think our community is in the need of a little healing. So I'm going to defer the remarks I had originally planned. Mr. Mayor, I intended on demolishing the argument you make for some of the decisions that have caused a little controversy, and you can look forward to that next time. But I don't like to kick a man when he's down, and you've had a rough day.
I want to be clear. I don't feel down at all.
Thank you. You're resilient. I can give you that.
Thank you.
I do have a couple of issues. First, with Councilwoman Marcus, you've caused a little conflict for me lately. You've initiated this process of the cuss jar, and I don't know how much cussing costs, what words are cuss words. And more importantly, I'll get that later, you know, I like to support my city and give money to it, and I like to cuss. So that's where the conflict comes in. And if I ever get a little extra money, you're going to see me run through the halls of the city hall just cussing up a storm. So, you know, I don't know what to do about that. I was in the bathroom last week with Lyle Talbot. It was after the time when Senator Riner was here, and he had a thing to talk about priming the pumps and regulatory problems. And I wanted to know what we're going to do about that big hole in the side of the ship that's going to sink us. And I didn't get the answers. So I'm in the bathroom with Lyle, and there was a couple other guys here that had come and spoke. And we were talking about the Blue Star Project. And I said, "Oh, yeah, Lyle, I agreed with you on that one. That wasn't well thought out." And one of the guys in the bathroom said something really quick, and then snuck out the door before I could even turn my head. He said, "Oh, great, an environmentalist pot smoker now." And I said, "Well, if that's the best or worst, you can call me. That's fine, because that's about 80% of people will appreciate that." But I want us to stop fighting, and there's a lot of animosity. People are doing a lot of things that I don't think are helpful to our community. But I do want to have some sort of forum where we can hash out some of these recent problems in a construct...
30 seconds?
...where teams are trying to tee off on each other. So with that said, clerk, next time, I'm going to bring my little timer back, and that'll be more helpful, because I like to know the time. So let me know by email if we've fixed the clock before next council. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Deborah Hess?
Good evening, mayor and council.
Good evening.
I would just like to introduce myself. I'm Deborah Hess with Southern California Edison, and I am your new region manager for here. I've been with the company for 25 years, and I just recently came down from the Eastern Sierra. So I'm looking forward to working with the council and staff. I'll make it short. Good evening, and I'm excited to be here.
I'm glad you're here. I want to talk to you about dimming the streetlights. You know the project we're talking about?
Kathy's talked to me about that, so we'll see what we can do.
Yeah, we... that's kind of a priority, okay?
It is. I've heard that, so I will be meeting with staff and see what we can do with that.
I thought it might... I thought it might be of some value that you heard it from the mayor, okay?
Matter of fact, I think our meeting's next week on that.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's nice to meet you. From the Eastern Sierra, as I see, welcome to metropolitan Lancaster. Michael Patrick?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council. During the last meeting I attended, I was intrigued by the comments that Ms. Marquez had posted on her Facebook. And I decided to do a little bit of investigation into that particular incident. And I found through the Buffalo News all of the particulars of that particular crime. And as it turns out, this man was Samul Hassan. He was a prominent member in the Muslim community. He owned a TV station, and he was married twice before this incident. And there was a history of anger and violence that was documented. He was divorced twice. He didn't kill either wife. Took medication for depression, sleeping disorders. And again, he had a history of violent incidents documented over many years with his wife that he killed. His TV station was failing. He was in peril of losing it, in fact. And his wife had filed for divorce six days before that with a protection order preventing him from being in the house around her and their two children. Six days later, at the TV station, he apparently flipped out. He killed his wife by stabbing her multiple times, then beheaded her. He then shortly went to the police and turned himself in, where he was charged with second-degree murder. Now, the second-degree murder was determined by the DA that his crime did not fit the first-degree murder criteria. There was no premeditation. On the facts of the case, in the incident of the death of Assyria Hassan, it appears to represent a typical progression of escalation of domestic violence that led to homicide. It does no justice to all to say a certain religion or culture caused this. It's not Muslim domestic violence. It is not Jewish domestic violence. It is not Catholic domestic violence. It is just domestic violence, period. Oddly enough, a woman by the name of Marcia Papas, who is the New York president of the National Organization for Women, stated this was apparently a terroristic version of honor killing, a murder rooted in cultural notions about...
30 seconds?
Her comments inflamed and angered Muslim people and their organizations. When asked to apologize for her comments, she refused. It resulted in Muslims presenting complaints and Christians rallying in support of the woman. Now, I have to ask Ms. Marquez, did she read all of the article portrayed in the case? And if she did, she would have had to have known the commotion that would have caused. She... her statements almost mirrored Marcia Papas's statements.
Time is up.
Thank you. Glenn Morris?
Good evening, members, mayor, council members, concerned citizens. I'm just an average citizen of the Antelope Valley, born here on Lancaster Boulevard, raised and educated here. I'm a proud and honorable veteran of both the United States Army and the California National Guard, which I serve to honor and defend the Constitution of the United States and the state of California. I am appalled and embarrassed to see that my city council has apparently orchestrated a folly to use religious freedoms as a focal point and fuse to generate sympathetic votes for your causes at the expense of our constitutional rights or the freedom of religion without prosecution, at a time when our great nation is at war with some of the Muslim nations of the Mideast. I would hope that each and every member of this council go home and evaluate the reasons that you serve your community. And if you fall short of the benefit of all of the community involved, then please, tender your resignation and allow those that do to serve in this council. Thank you.
David Eber?
Good evening, citizens, staff, and council. First things first, starting the meeting at 6:30 would really benefit and encourage more community involvement, especially with those who commute and work, so they could, you know, they work till 5 and 6 o'clock. Reason I'm here is, over the years that I've come here, I've addressed many different issues. I've commended the city manager, Ms. Brubaker, Mr. Green, Mr. Neal, Mr. Ludikic. All of them have opened their doors, especially Ms. Boswell, who I had the pleasure. She's an outstanding person on the staff, very professional, very helpful, and was a pleasure to work with, as has been most everybody. I've had my differences with some of the council members and both of the mayors before you, and many of differences with the city attorney. Seems as though I have another one. Having said that, on January the 22nd, I was here because there was a problem with my nomination papers. And Jerry Bryant, who has been excellent in the past, whom I have complete faith in and had no doubt that she could address my concerns in this matter and handle them with no problem since, under Sections 307 and 320 election codes, which the city attorney didn't seem to know what those were today when I tried to speak to him about it before I spoke. As a result of that, instead, a city official and you, Mr. Mayor, got involved, intervened in the process, which I believe goes beyond the boundaries of the safeguards of the election codes. Furthermore, in the paper on January 31st, and I'll take a page out of Mr. Bozigan's book, about erroneous reporting on another thing that had to do with an earlier issue. And I spoke with Mr. Wilson, and they had some dates messed up on the story, and they also had how many times I've run. No real big deal. But something that troubled me was when the part of the story referred to the email that was in there, and it was quoting you, Mr. Mayor, said, when you came up the stairs, basically, that when you came up the stairs where the clerk's office was, that I was yelling at staff. And in all due fairness to you, was that an erroneous statement in the paper?
30 seconds?
A take of what happened. And I don't have a lot more if you want to interject at that point, because if... I've spoke with others, and I don't believe I was yelling at anybody. And if the paper was erroneous, then I don't want to be here being accusatory. That wouldn't be fair. And we know that I'm about fairness. I'm about the First Amendment and protecting that.
Time is up.
Thank you, Mr. Eber. Eric Ber... Berusch... You know, Eric, I got your name during the Walmart stuff, and then you haven't been back, and I'm old.
Well, I'm here to really talk about the issue that's been going on in this valley for the past two weeks over Councilwoman Marquez's Facebook remarks, not realizing, and I'm not like blaming it at first, but saying how a quote on the internet would be... not be realizing private. Also, how they said they believe in honor killings, beheadings of all women, but that's not what the Islamic religion is all about. The interview that I saw yesterday, or from what people said, saying that you apologized, saying that they don't believe it and don't feel like it. They said that they think it needs to come more from your heart. From what they said, it was that it came... you said, "I apologize," and quickly walked out the door, from what I hear. And if you now think I'm backing terrorists, then that's your opinion, but I'm not. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Scott Pelka?
First of all, David, what happened between you and Lyle Talbot in the bathroom? Well, I don't want to know any more about it. Second thing is the article in the LA Times that showed a... it was discussing a video about you going to China, that you had produced, going to China. And on that video, the photograph and the video that I saw, had some of the highest technology that our government has in the way of military aircraft. Why are you taking a video to China showing our military aircraft? And also, it was rather a racist remark, I think, to say that there's not enough Chinese people in the video. You've got to put more Chinese people in the video to...
Actually, I think I said Asians.
Well, Asians, Chinese, Red, you know, six to one half dozen the other. The other thing is, the... who's the clergy going to China with you? Since the country's basically 95% Buddhist, I don't understand why there's any reason whatsoever you should take any clergy with you to China. That's the third thing. The last thing I wanted to say was, Ms. Marquez, since you stated in the... yesterday in an interview, you said that I was told to apologize, and I apologized. Who told you to apologize?
Mr. Pelka, now is not the time to ask questions of the council. Now is the time for public comment, and we're more than happy to listen to any public comment you might have.
Well, it is a public comment, but I think it's a fair question to ask, although this is not an issue the council has taken into consideration regarding a matter of the city. This has to do with a matter of a public comment that you actually made at a press conference, and I think everybody has a right to know who told you, you know, to apologize.
Mr. Pelka, now is the time for public comment. It's not the time to question the council. We're more than happy to listen to any public comment you might have. Thank you. Okay, any more speaker cards?
No.
Okay. Nobody else wants to call me a racist, to call me any nasty names? I mean, now's your time. Now's your chance. If you'd like to come up? If you'll talk to Natalia back there, she'll set up an appointment for you to come see me, or any of the council members, and we're more than happy to talk to you at any time. Okay? Thank you. Okay, Vice Mayor Smith, or Councilmember Marcus?
I was going to do a PowerPoint for this presentation for you this time, Mr. Mayor, but the written report from staff will probably suffice.
Well, I can't tell you how disappointed I am. I thought you were disappointed last time, too.
My only comment was that on the board of the Antelope Valley Transit Authority, that I actually got to see the underside of one of our AVTA buses up close and personal yesterday, and that they're in really good shape.
Were you down in a grease pit? Now, that is a council member who takes her job seriously to actually get under the bus and see what's going on.
I think she was saying she was thrown under.
Oh. Oh. I am so stupid at times. As a representative to the sanitation district, I'm not willing to go that far. As a representative to the sanitation district, I'm not willing to go that far. Okay, let's, yes. Now, why did I say that? You know what's going to happen? We're going to have a video tube of me saying how stupid I am. It's kind of, it'll be broadcast to all the voters.
That'll be Lyle's next bumper sticker.
Leave Lyle alone.
Lyle's a good...
Okay. We are now, we will now recess to closed session.
In closed session, under Government Code Section 54956.9B, to consider two cases. They gave direction to city attorney concerning the handling of those two cases. And the council also met in closed session under Government Code Section 54956.8, concerning real property negotiations, the property at 1130 Autonwall Drive, and gave direction to staff concerning those negotiations.
Thank you. Okay.
And just for the record, when I said city council met, I meant city council and redevelopment agency.
Yes, thank you. Okay. We are adjourning in memory of Duke Bloom. He was the owner of Duke and Slim's Television and Appliance Store in Lancaster, a longtime citizen of the city of Lancaster. Mr. Bloom was a well-respected businessman who made numerous contributions to the community organizations. He was a loving husband, father, an honorable man. He has served the city for, what, 50 years? And people are just absolutely brokenhearted that he has passed, and we are adjourning in his memory. We were adjourned until February 23, 2010, at 5:00 PM. Carol, my day is done, and I'm coming home.